This is Asad, and this is your Penny.com health meeting. In part two of our healthcare terminology, we begin with the phrase "out-of-pocket maximum", which is the most money in the form of deductible, co-pays, and coinsurances you can pay each year, regardless of how much medical care you use. Do you need prescription medication? Well, Penny.com has provided a convenient way for you to look at the plan if you're considering to see how much your prescription could cost. Network is also a key term you will continuously see while navigating Penny.com. Your network is compiled of healthcare providers and facilities your insurer has contracted with. Do you want to include your doctor in your plan? No worries. You can use Penny's provider directory to see if your provider is included in your plan. Signing up for healthcare coverage can be intimidating. Luckily, Penny...
Okay. I also want to thank Dan and Stephen very much for hosting us. I appreciate them greatly for doing that, and I appreciate all of you for taking the time to actually be here and for the people who were online listening as well. My name is Elizabeth Elias, and I just... A little bit about myself, I'm not originally from here. I'm from California, but I've been here in this community for 30-plus years. And I work as a social worker, and I have been in this community working as a social worker for the past 20-plus years. And I am very active in my community, in my church, and various organizations. And I am a mother. Hopefully, someday to be a grandmother and would love to be able to be a voice on City Council, to be able to talk about issues that I'm concerned about in my day-to-day job.
... meaningfully become the process of retooling what our citizens' interactions with the police are like, and that does not come purely from within council, and it would be wrong of me to take credit for that. That comes from the community. And you all should give yourselves credit for those positive changes that have happened in the last four years in your city, and I hope to work with you to create more positive changes in the next four years. Thank you.
All right.
It was best I stayed home. When I announced I would like to run for City Council, everyone said it's a long shot. A challenge and an uphill battle. And that was okay. I believe in the potential our city has. I see my fellow residents being overlooked, and I urge to take this challenge and fight for you. Crime, taxes, and homelessness...
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sean Keeler, and I represent Janet Diaz today. This is going to be a little hard for me because even though I've worked with Janet Diaz, I am going to be speaking in the first person. So, this is from Janet. I've spent the last 19 years as a healthcare professional. As a member of Lancaster City Council, I've been an advocate for our community. Throughout my life, I've been a voice for those in need. I'm running to continue the fight against COVID and plan for our recovery. We must ensure that our local, state, and federal economy rebuilds. I will also ensure that resources and funding are dispersed effectively. The pandemic has worsened inequality, and highlighted justices for already struggling families, minority businesses, and underrepresented communities. I was raised in Lancaster, and growing up, I faced many hardships and barriers. My mother struggled to find work, affordable housing, and affordable childcare. We experienced homelessness and poverty. I overcame those obstacles to establish a successful 19-year career in healthcare, where I'm currently working as a mental health analyst. Throughout my career, I sought many opportunities to serve my community. As a sexual assault counselor for six years at the YWCA, I taught Sunday School at a local church, and served the elderly regularly at a nursing home. In 2017, I was elected to the Lancaster City Council and made history as the first Latina to be elected to the city council. Today, I'm running to be re-elected to that council. I currently... Sorry, got a phone call. I currently chair the First Now Committee and am a member of the Public Works and Finance Committees. During my term... I'll wait over.
No, that's hers.
That's mine. All right. Thank you, Sean. And that was the opening statement for Janet Diaz. All right. And now I have the last opening statement here from Lechar Kali. He is also running for City Council, and here it is. Hello, my name is Lechar Kali. Pronounced Le-shar-kali-kay. I am a Democratic candidate for City Council. I've been a Lancaster resident for a decade. I am sorry I cannot be with you tonight in person to share a little about myself and my hopes for our city. I work second shift, and I am not afforded much time off. After graduating from Millersville in May, I took the civil service exam. I was hired at the post office, and due to the supply chain backlogs we've all been reading about, I was unable to be released from work this evening. The time I have caught out in this evening, I've dedicated to attending City Council meetings so that I can be well-informed to best serve you. I have also spent countless days knocking on doors in every neighborhood in the city. This has been the most important experience of all, hearing directly what Lancaster residents mean. Like many Lancaster residents, Lancaster is not my first home. I am from Haiti, and after leaving my hometown and earning my master's degree, I taught law and languages in Mexico City. I speak French, Spanish, Haitian Creole, and English. My experience as a new American in Lancaster allows me to represent the thousands of Lancaster residents who come here as immigrants. The fact that I speak several languages allow me to listen to the many voices that aren't always heard. But I believe that my background, education, and skills will allow me to represent all residents of the city in my time of service. Thank you. You see how smooth that was? All right. Put my microphone down. Okay, so listen. We're about to get this party started. I know, right? I feel like I'm about to trip walk out here. So listen. So we're about to get started. I'm really appreciative of all you guys getting out here and joining us today. I'm sure you have some questions here. I do see some familiar faces, and I do see some people that are really into the political scape here in the city. So I don't want to hold you guys up. So let's get to the questions. Now, listen, don't try to stump or dump on our people today. It's meant to be uplifting. However, I'm not telling you don't challenge them. Ask them serious questions. Ask them questions that directly impact you. So think about that. So, do we have any questions from our audience members? Hey, Mr. Paul. We're going to give you a microphone, sir.
Okay. If someone came to you with a proposal to build a new piece of public infrastructure in our city, how would you evaluate whether or not the project was worth implementing?
All right. So that question is for everybody to answer. Again, you have a minute and a half to respond. Who would like to go first? Don't you all jump at once. All right. Ms. Faith Pratt.
Okay. So if someone comes to you with a project to be built in the city that had to do with infrastructure, the way I would determine if the project was worthwhile was to meet with that person, or meet with those folks, or those people, or whoever, whatever the organization was, and ask the questions that I needed to ask. I would need to know, in order for me to stand behind you, I need to know what the sustainability of the project would be over the next 10 to 15 years. How do you plan on running it? How do you plan on staffing it? You know, what kind of funding has been secured? And what kind of funding are you looking for in other places that has not been secured yet? Those are probably some of the biggest things that I would look for. One of the most major things is sustainability. And that's what would mostly be important to me, like sustainability. Because, you know, once you stand behind a project, you want to make sure that it has a long life after it's built. So after it's built, I don't want it to go away in the next, you know, three years. I want to know that it's going to be there and be able to sustain itself into the future. Thank you.
So to echo a lot of what Faith just said, I think we need to talk about sustainability, both economically and environmentally. It's really important for us that we don't negatively impact the local climate and the global climate. I also think that we need to look at what the scope of the project is and its impact, its reach and impact. Because a project, while it might be a big investment, can definitely be worth it if it's going to positively impact a lot of people's lives. Sadly, sometimes projects that benefit some people's lives also have a negative effect on others' lives. And so I think that we need to have a very public discussion about what that looks like for the community. There's also a difference between physical infrastructure and social infrastructure. And so I think when we talk about those sorts of projects and the differences between them, the one question that bridges that line is the cost. And much like Ms. Faith said, there needs to be a sense of economic sustainability because if this project is really worth it for the community, we want to make sure that it continues on for generations. Otherwise, what's the point of making a single-generation investment in something that is only going to last for a decade or two?
I was going to say, I agree with the sustainability. I would want to take a look at, I think, having people in the community, the community come in and get together and have input onto what is the purpose of the infrastructure? What are we doing here? Who is going to benefit? Having conversations with various people at the table would be important. It would also be important to consider how is this infrastructure going to affect the people in the community culturally? How will it impact different people in the community differently, both positively and negatively, to be able to have a conversation about that? To be able to see if this is something that before, we can look at it long-term, look at it maybe more in the short term, maybe five, 10 years, and look at it, you know, with a study, look at it from various angles with different types of key players from the community as well as different people in the community themselves.
Thank you. Mr. Holmer, I want to ask, are you referring to public works infrastructure or social infrastructure, or either one?
Either or.
Okay. So I think, and actually, this is apropos, I think one of the biggest things that we have to be aware of, and projects need to start being analyzed through the lens of deferred maintenance. Oftentimes, with new projects, the city is on the hook to develop road infrastructure, sewer infrastructure, or water infrastructure for a project, or more insidiously, to have that installed and then maintain it for the ongoing life of the city. Eventually, that, so let's say, new sewer infrastructure for a development may have a 20-year life or a 50-year life, at which point, there is some council in 2072 who's cursing me out because of a project that I voted for that they didn't know that they were going to have to pay for. Similarly, with social infrastructure, the long-term impact of a project on a given community has to be a part of that because the role of that thing in the community will change over multiple generations, as Mr. Dastre said. And I think, just as an example of a project that did not necessarily meet that muster, if we think about the community basic project for Sunnyside. In their proposals, they were not able to guarantee that they delivered the promised affordable housing, and it represented a large infrastructure commitment for the city, and that project ultimately did not go forward.
Awesome. I appreciate that question, Mr. Paul. There was rumors in the southeast about somebody wanting to build an amphitheater. Guess what they wanted to put it? No, they actually wanted to put it as a dude street mannered houses. They want their idea was to knock down all those houses, that entire complex, and build the amphitheater. That was their idea. And that was what, 2020, they had this idea? And I'm saying, are you really like, do you think they would want to go for this? So yeah, so I really appreciate that question, Mr. Paul, because people have these grand ideas about our community, so it's important that we talk about it. Next question. Who has our next question? All right. Ms. Goldberg. Here, look at it. Give me a microphone.
For those of us who don't know, if you guys... This question is actually for Ms. Daisy. What is City Council, and what is your role? What does City Council do?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that. Thank you. So City Council represents the legislative body of government for the city of Lancaster. It is primarily our job to pass or not pass laws, pass or not pass a budget, and put key persons in key positions. So for example, as Councilor Diaz mentioned in her opening statement, many city boards, commissions, and authorities have their personnel appointed to them by council. We also ratify executive leadership team members. For, in a recent example, you'll think of Chief John Bay, who was appointed by the mayor, but that is a position which, much like the Senate advises and consents on cabinet positions, requires council's ratification. I think perhaps stepping past that, there's a meaningful question at every election, which is defining what the broader role of council is. Those are the things that are written in the law. But I think that we have an obligation to represent our whole community because we are not districted. We are all at large, which means we all represent the whole city, unlike in other communities, and indeed, to act as a check on certain legislative or executive wishes that come from the administration. I think a good example would be the civil service points change that recently came. End of done.
So my next question is for all of you, for each one of you. If you're elected, what are your term goals that City Council representatives?
What are the things that we would like to see? Is that what your question is?
Yeah.
So one of the things, what I do for living as a social worker is I work with many people who are mandated to do treatment for and address the substance use that they're in addiction, and they're homeless. And so that is a big concern. For me, I'd really like to see us take on, make some movement towards being able to help these people. We've been able to see more and more people on the street, more and more people have died from this. And I'd really like to see if we could start collaborating with the right agencies and the right people and start coming to the table and talking about... And I know this is a really big issue, but we do need to start doing something about that. And so I'm really concerned about that. That's one of the bigger things that I'd like to work on or start conversations about. I'd also like to see us talk more about housing and relationships with the police and being able to have them, have more police in the community, in the city. That's my time, sir.
So when I think we... When I'm thinking about my goals as an elected representative, I think that there are things that I want to see done in my term, and there are things that I want to see carry on beyond my time. I think the first thing that I would like to do is have more open and transparent government on all levels in the city government. So that means that every public government meeting will be available virtually for all city residents, and you'll be able to comment virtually because people have work, people have kids. People don't always want to take themselves downtown to go to the meeting. Doesn't mean you shouldn't participate. I think in terms of the things that I would like to see carry on beyond my time, we need to have bigger conversations in Lancaster. One thing that happened at council last night is they decided to pass $5 million in ARPA funds for affordable housing, and I applaud council for that. And they also made sure that every project is going to be brought before council so people can give public input. I think that not only needs to be done for affordable housing, that needs to be done for the big developments going on in the city that don't always benefit all of our city residents. And I think that we need to be making bigger investments long-term in securing better infrastructure, physical and social, because the thing about infrastructure is you have to invest year after year.
Thank you. Like Mr. Dastre just said, last night, we passed an ordinance that allowed the city to, you know, move forward with some affordable housing, and also gave us the ability to be able to share that with the community at large in the entire city. So I would like to continue my work as a City Council member and continue to work on affordable housing, which is something that is near and dear to me because it's so, so very much needed. And also work with community and policing to change things, you know, have the relationship between the police department and the community at large, especially the community of color. You know, just to make sure communications are better and people of color are treated better. And to go on with this dauntless fight for COVID recovery. Thank you.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you so much, sir.
Oh, yeah, she had... I was on the other question, and then...
Yep, go ahead.
So I actually think, and this is why I think, we were discussing, you know, have people all made up their minds by the time they arrive at a forum like this? But honestly, to be in a room with minds like these is as beneficial to the people who end up on council, I think, as it is to all of you. I think the things that I would like to see completed in the next four years of council are the things that it feels like we've gotten to start on in the past year, but we need to go further. Previously, we had a police chief who was frankly openly disrespectful and refused to hold officers accountable. That's changing, and officers are now on bikes more. They are in the community more. They are responding to accountability structures. And we're not there, but we've gotten off on the right foot in that direction. I'd like to see, frankly, many millions more of investment in affordable housing. And I think we're not there, but we've gotten off in the right direction. And so, and insofar as I have the ability, I would like to be sure that we carry that good work forward so that future councilors can pick it up and take it into the next generation because we simply will not be able to complete the work. And it's hubris to think that we'll be able to get it all done. We need to equip those who come after us to do so.
Awesome. Good luck, Diego, for your microphone. All right. So before we take more questions from the audience, I do have a couple of zingers here on social media. The first question. This comes from Mr. Good Neighbor. Or Misses, I'm not quite sure if it's gendered. How have you made it easier for women and minority-owned business to gain contracts with the city of Lancaster? I guess this is for our people who are already on City Council. If not, what will you commit to doing in the future to make sure that women and minority-owned businesses get a fair chance at gaining contracts going forward?
I'll do that one real quick. The short answer is not enough. The last four years, not enough, has been done to advance business ownership and capital development in Black and Brown communities for women-owned businesses and for LGBTQ+ folks, though we have authorized upwards of a million, upwards of $1 million of loans and grants from ARPA and CRIS and Enterprise Loan Funds in that direction. A thing that I am interested in pursuing because one of the most important things that the city can do, while we cannot control private capital, is to set an example in this community. The city of Philadelphia has a minority contracting requirement, and every time the city takes on large business contracts, we should be required to answer what percentage of contractors and subcontractors are women-owned businesses, are Black-owned businesses? And then we need to take it a step further because we don't want to create an arbitrary condition that's going to make it harder to get things done. We need to be investing funds in institutions like this one to make sure that the skills and assets are there for Black-owned businesses, women-owned businesses, et cetera, et cetera, to take advantage of those contracts. We have to do both.
Okay, I don't know what you want me to add to that. But there's not much more that can be added to that. Other than, other than the fact that there is a project going on downtown Lancaster currently, where there has been, if I'm not mistaken, I think it's somewhere around two million dollars has been invested into the southern market to remodel and revitalize the southern market so that the southern market is an entrepreneurial hub. And if everything goes the way it was explained to us and we hold everybody's feet to the fire, that place will be an entrepreneurial hub for many cultures of different cuisine and different goods from every community, the black community, the Hispanic community, the Haitian community. And that's what we were told, and that's what we intend to hold their feet to the fire to do. So I look forward to those people getting the help that they need and getting guided through steps that they need to get guided through in order to build a strong business for people of color, ethnic communities, women, LGBTQ, and anybody else that wants to start a business. Thank you.
And for people who are looking to get on city council, is there anything that you're willing to commit to the future to make sure that women and minority-owned businesses get access to contracts?
So, I don't feel... Hello. So much like, as you said, I think that there needs to be a certain requirement where we're looking at these big developments or businesses coming into the city and say, okay, how are you going to achieve equity for communities of color and for women? I don't honestly know what that structurally looks like. I don't know what the legislative language around that looks like, but I would definitely be willing to commit to that because I think what we know is historically, women and communities of color have gotten the short end of the stick. And when you put them both together, I can't imagine what life is like for those individuals. In terms of how we're going to achieve equity for women and minorities, I think the other thing we need to discuss is not everyone can be a business owner, not everyone is an entrepreneur. And so we need to make sure that the city, when these other businesses are coming in or people are starting their business, that they're going to be committing to paying those people well. They're going to be committing to paying, or providing them proper benefits, of their working hours. Because if they're not, they have no business here, quite honestly.
I would say that the thing that I would be committed to doing is to continue to advocate for women and people of color, especially myself. As I've seen in the community, Spanish-speaking, it's a challenge for people who do not speak English as a first language to be a business owner. It's really challenging. So I would be committed to doing whatever it would take to come alongside them and to advocate, to meet with people in the community, to find out what are the barriers. I can kind of, I kind of have an idea myself, but I would really like to say I would be committed to coming to the table and saying, we need to really take a look at what they are and how we can address them in the future.
Awesome, awesome. Our next question is, and this works out well, is for you, Liz, coming from social media. Jen wants to know, what are the right organizations that aren't at the table?
So one of the major organizations that I would really like to see us work better with is the Water Street Rescue Mission, definitely the Lancaster Shelter for abused women, Tabor Housing Development Corps, you know, just to mention a few. We need to work with these individual companies, or we really need to work with all of them and get them together because I think, for me, knowing that most of the people that I work with that are homeless need services, and these are the agencies that they work with. These are the agencies that they receive the help from, that I think could help to assist, to come together, so we can start taking a look at, like, how can we address the needs of people who are homeless, who many times don't want to be homeless, but really don't know how to help themselves at times, really just need help. So I think if we could get minimally these agencies together, that would be extremely helpful.
Awesome, awesome. All right, this next question comes from Tammy Reos. She says, what do you want to do about addressing poverty and the criminalization of the poor? We have local laws that could be rescinded that do nothing but criminalize people for poverty, and yet we create poverty. Half the city is poor or low income. And she gives us an example that you could rescind ordinance fifteen dash twenty sixteen.
Actually, I'm gonna... May I? I feel like I'm hogging, but... So fifteen dash twenty sixteen, which Ms. Rojas mentions, is the aggressive panhandling ordinance. And it's one that, I'm gonna get in trouble for saying this, but it's one that I think is on shaky legal footing. It covers, it largely covers behaviors that are already covered elsewhere in law, and seems to have largely been passed as a response to people's discomfort with folks panhandling downtown. I don't know if anybody remembers the campaign around Central Market, it's okay to say no to panhandling. And of course, it's always been okay to say no to individuals for any reason. And indeed, I'm not saying that it should be okay to harass someone or follow someone as the ordinance attempts to address, but I think Ms. Rojas is right, we should prioritize that for rescindment, or at least adjustment, because I feel that panhandling ordinances tend to threaten the First Amendment rights of the poor. If somebody can message me in the middle of the day to tell me about their multi-level marketing scheme, they can absolutely, it's absolutely their free speech, to come up and ask me for, you know, five bucks or ten bucks.
I think that's for all of us.
I think that was all of us. Okay, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I wasn't, thank you for clarifying what that is. For me, I definitely agree, and I feel like that is not the solution, once again, very punitive. We need to take a look at other means of addressing the situation. This has been going on for quite some time. And I really don't think that having, I really feel that having collaborative effort, thinking, getting, getting people to talk about things instead of using these types of legislations will have a better impact in the community.
So when we talk about criminalizing the poor, I think it's really, I think it's really important that we have a much larger conversation about mass incarceration in this country because we have four percent of the world's population, and yet we have twenty-five percent of the world's prisoners in the freest nation on the planet. And mind you, there are individuals in our society making large profits off of holding those people, mostly people of color. So when we talk about criminalizing the poor, we need to be challenging much larger systems than just panhandling. Yes, I would also like to rescind that because that should be within their right to ask you for a in-kind donation to support them being alive. But we need to have a much bigger conversation in this country. People are being criminalized just for existing, just for being born in a community where they don't have the same advantages as everyone else, and that's not okay. I do believe that in not only panhandling, but things like drug issues, drug issues should not be treated as a criminal thing, they should be a public health thing. So yeah, in the grander scheme, I would love to see almost all drugs decriminalized, if not legalized, especially things like marijuana, because the science bears out that it's not any more dangerous than the alcohol we drink every day, if not, it's safer than that. So yeah, when we talk about criminalizing poverty, that is a very serious conversation we need to have.
Although I do agree with a lot of what's been said up here, I'm gonna take this moment and choose not to answer that question for Ms. Rojas.
All right, all right. So before I continue on with some of our questions and comments from our audience members online, do we have any questions from our audience members here? All right, woo, woo, woo! I'm sorry, y'all, if y'all knew who this lady was underneath this mask, you'd be excited to... Ma'am, do you have a question?
Okay, my question. I reside in the southeast part of Lancaster, and I've resided here all my life. I'm going to be bound to be answering any of the questions, southeast chicks, okay? A lot of candidates talk a good talk. They're not walking the walk. Their actions do not dictate the words that come out of their mouths. A lot of times, decisions that are made are made against the wishes of the residents. So as candidates, what are you going to do better as ones that are asking to be re-elected and those that are asking to be elected for the first time? What are you going to do to better the relations within the city and especially within the southeast? Because they have little faith in government to begin with, let alone the candidates. I mean, some people don't even know the candidates, and you're up for reelection. When I came to this last week, they didn't know some of you. There should be no reason why our residents do not know legislative ordinance for our government. So that's the question I have for the residents of the southeast. Thanks, Tanay, for that question. My intent on continuing to serve the residents of the city, and especially the residents of the southeast that look like me. And, you know, not all of them look like me, but, you know, a large percent of the other people there are people of color. A large percentage of the people there are women of color. So, you know, I mostly, I try to keep myself open, and I don't know a lot of people that don't know me, but if they don't, that doesn't mean that I'm not willing to sit down and let them know me. So I'll just continue to keep striving and keep trying to be better and keep trying to do the work that has, that is set before us. You know, at times, it is difficult to do, but at the same time, it's something that I have a passion for and something that I love to do. You know, I never thought that I would get to this point in my life and be so passionate about something that needs to be done. And I still don't see a lot of people running to the table to jump up and say, hey, let's get this done, especially people of color. Get on the boards, do the things that need to be done so that our voices are heard, so that other people know who we are. Thank you.
When it comes to the walking the walk, I have been canvassing on top of working forty hours a week, and I've been canvassing all over the city. And I specifically started in the southeast and the southwest of Lancaster because I know those are the folks that need the real help from the government. Those are the folks that need government to stand up and deliver. And it's really hard for government to do that. We have structural problems. We have issues when it comes to revenue, we have issues when it comes to debt commitments. And yet, we're gonna make the space and we're gonna make the time for them. I'm gonna, if elected, or even if not, I'm gonna continue to come to their door so I can talk to them. Because when I come and they aren't interested in politics, but they want to talk to me about the fact that they're facing eviction and that they've just gotten over their drug problem and that their child needs assistance because their child has mental health issues, it makes me want to work harder. Because I don't know if you guys have noticed, but I'm a white dude, okay? I was born with immense amounts of privilege in this world. It is my responsibility with that privilege to make sure I am serving the people who don't have the same opportunities that I do. I'll end it there.
I would say that that's an awesome question. And I know when I was in the southeast, I would say that was one of the very sad things that I heard as a city council, as a citizen, just walking around and saying, talking, saying, hey, I want to be considered for this position on city council. And they're like, and many people said, what is that? What is that about? What do they do? And that was really sad. I would have to say props to Janet Diaz because she was the only one on that side of town, when I went canvassing door to door, that they even knew of. They did not recognize anybody else's name but Janet Diaz. And so if elected, that, first of all, one of the things that I'd like to see is, I'm really disappointed that city council doesn't have translation services. So I'd like to see that. I don't think that's fair for Spanish-speaking people and/or in other languages. I think that should be offered. And I definitely think that we need, if elected, I need to be able to, I would be willing to go out and be in the community much more often, holding meetings and just going out into the community, you know, way more often. Because I think it is very important that people know who you are.
Thank you. You know, Tanay, that's an excellent question. And I think in the past few months, in direct interactions with you and other people in this room, I have seen the specific benefit of that. At the end of the question where I did get time-carded, I think a really excellent example of that was the proposed change to how civil service is evaluated. And it was specifically from talking to community members that I was able to ascertain specifically how, not just members of the bargaining unit, but black and brown members of the fire and police bargaining unit felt about that decision. It was through conversations with a woman who lives on the first block of South Prince Street that we have the lead ordinance changes and the changes to the human relations ordinance, which would protect tenants against discrimination, that we are now considering. The past year has been a really well-done lesson learned in paying more attention to constituents and getting good results. And I hope that we, I will commit, and I hope the rest of council will also commit to moving in that direction. Also, I do just want to say, if you come to council and you would like translation services in Spanish, French, Arabic, Nepali, or Vietnamese, those are available to you through a partnership with Church World Services that is in fact available. Thank you.
Awesome, awesome. Oh, we have another question from our audience members. Yes, gentleman in the back.
It needs an enema because the streets all the way around are bad, whether it's north, south, east, or west. The trees are just, since we're supposed to be a city of trees, why are all the trees hanging down so low when it's supposed to be an ordinance against that? So those are my two things. Anyone?
Can you actually repeat the first portion of your question about the set-asides? I was not clear on that.
As an old contractor, many times I asked about that. As an old contractor, many times I asked about that. I couldn't get the jobs, even though I was low-cost. Why is that so?
And for these, uh, can you release contracts, direct, direct contracts with the city? Because as I currently understand it, we do not yet have a minority contractor set aside. And I would really love for us to have.
Do not have that.
Okay.
But, but they are aware of that.
Yes.
And then they will give the jobs to those people, I mean, as the developers.
Yeah, uh, I can tell you why they have not done that, uh, why this is coming up under my term as council president. This is something that should have been addressed, uh, years ago, um, when it was done in Philly and Atlanta and other cities. So, uh, I can't tell you why it's not done yet, but it's my plan to get it done under this term on city council. Um, and there's legislation, uh, with the, with the solicitor. I want our city to have this. And as I said, to have a pathway to support contractors, and not just, not just new contractors, but legacy contractors like yourself, so that there's funding for folks coming out of institutions like these to do apprenticeships with contractors like you, uh, so that there is someone to continue to fill whatever set aside we create for generations into the future. And, um, you're give me the second half of your question again, I forgot. Oh, it was about the, the tree ordinance. Yeah, um, the trees and the roads have not received enough, uh, maintenance over the past four years, really the past twenty years since the millennium. We need to increase the portion of our budget that specifically goes to maintenance. And I will applaud Director Stephen Campbell for a plan to address that, as well as sidewalks and snow clearing, which again, in terms of engaging with constituents, has been sent back to the lab because there was not enough constituent feedback at first. So we're gonna take another swing at it, directly engaging folks. And somebody correct me, is the public meeting on November fourth to discuss the sidewalk and snow clearing ordinance?
Twenty-third.
On the twenty-third?
Twenty-third.
On November twenty-third, thank you.
Did they change?
Oh, no, that's, that's for the vote. I don't know when the meeting is. That's for the county.
Oh, yes. So, I'm sorry, and forgive me all the time. We did table the proposed ordinance until the twenty-third. I am referring to the public town hall meeting to discuss that, uh, to discuss that item with community members. I believe that is scheduled for November fourth.
Ishmael, it's the fourth at six o'clock.
It is the fourth at six P.M.
Okay, so in regards to the first part of your question, sir, I think that Izzy basically said all of my general sentiment. Um, the city needs to be doing better. We do need legislative, uh, rules in place to make sure there is equity. In regards to the second part of your, uh, question about trees and the streets in general, um, that is something I have a little bit of personal experience with, because I live in a, uh, on the third floor of a house. And when we got our trees trimmed, the temperature in my room went through the roof in the summer. Street trees do a lot for the community. Sadly, on the south side of the city, we don't see as much equity in terms of street trees and general green infrastructure. There's not the same amount of park and green space available for community residents. I would like to see investments in that. Furthermore, when it comes to the street trees and sidewalks, it is my understanding that it's the responsibility of the property owner, which is fine if you're a property owner who's doing okay to do the maintenance, but a lot of folks, they might own a home, but they're cash poor and that's an expense. And it's gonna be even more expensive if the city starts enforcing that and they start getting fines. Personally, long-term, I would love to see the city government, the city public works department, take up that responsibility for the community.
Alright, the first part of the question, I really can't add much more than what Ishmael has already said. The, the twenty percent general contractor thing, I'm almost lost in there, but I'll get caught up. Um, although the streets in the city are still bad, especially, now, I live in the southwest. Not much different than the southeast, okay? This, so although the streets in the city are, are, there's a lot of them that are bad, the major bulk of the problem, uh, from what I can see, are, it's in the southwest and in the southeast. Saying that, and at the same time, I was in the southeast, I was on Conestoga Street, I was on Beaver Street, I was on Howard Avenue, Strawberry, Locust, Pershing Avenue, the upper part of it. A lot has been done. Not enough, no. And more attention needs to be paid to it, but it's getting done. You know, maybe we need to speed it up. I don't know. But, and then the, the tree trimming, there again, I'm at a total loss, 'cause, you know, if somebody has an answer that I have a tree in my backyard, then I need some work done to.
Awesome. And we have another question.
Oh, did, Elizabeth did?
We could go on. I mean, I, I don't really have much more to, did you turn it off?
I'm so sorry, I always turn it off.
I'm, I'll just say this very quickly. I'm in favor of tree trimming. I love, uh, I love, I, I do think it's an issue. And I think that I would like to see more funding go into, uh, greenery and things like that, but I definitely am for tree trimming, uh, because there are a lot of trees that are hanging very low.
Alright, and we have another, um, audience member question.
Yeah, I have a question for you guys. Alright, so as, uh, far as, um, as we redefine policing and, uh, just everything we do in community, um, do you guys have any ideas on putting money into community projects?
Add more community people, more people working in community, whether they're taking care of the, the, they're trimming trees, they're doing all that. We have a city force. All right, but how are we keeping people in the city with, to keep their jobs? How are we getting people to work their jobs? How are we making it feasible? Are we doing anything?
So, I'm not.
Do you guys have ideas on how to keep, how to, how to get people?
These community jobs?
Yeah, so we actually, uh, so I think probably the easiest way to get and keep people in jobs, kind of regardless of what the job is, is pay scale and benefits. Um, we pay all of our parks and streets employees. They start, I believe, actually, my friend started as a streets employee about two years ago. They start above seventeen dollars an hour with healthcare, vision, and dental. So, um, you know, the parks and the streets employees, that's necessary. And we're having conversations internally about whether the city does take on shoveling, sidewalks, and tree trimming, though those exist as the, the property of the individual property owner. And we are trying to balance that. Now, that would be a big increase in city staffing. And we're trying to balance that cost to the homeowner and the fees and fines as an individual with the significant tax increase that it would be to hire the dozen or two new city employees, at least, to, to manage that, manage that long-term. In terms of policing, and I'll try to do this really quick, um, we've added three social workers, uh, to the staff in the last year specifically to deal with issues of policing and housing. And I personally think that we need to go much, much more in that direction. The police department is twenty-seven million dollars of our annual budget. It's almost all the property taxes you pay right to that one department. And I'll stop.
Can you just briefly, can you state the first question?
Oh, no, I forget it. I'll try again. Um, it was along the lines of, uh, we talked about, uh, like, needing jobs in the community, change poverty, change where things are. All right, yeah, we hire, we hire out, we hire these big companies. We'll see the same company working on the roads every year. Every year, the same company. So they're getting that money every year that's what they can bank on. And half the people that, that work for them don't live in the city. You know what I'm saying? So how, where are we going to address that? Like, with our money, that money that we have, that we're putting into everybody else's pocket?
I think what I would like to say, one of the things that I see working with people who have addictions and mental health issues and homelessness issues is, uh, it's great to offer jobs that are high, high-paying jobs, but they need to be, they need skills too. I, I'd like to see, uh, you know, I think it's great to have career link, uh, but it would be great to also have other community agencies like that, helping people to learn, uh, skills, more skills. We need, the people need to be able to have, to be more marketable, you know, to, to learn more job skills. And other practical things like, um, to make it easier for them to learn, um, English. Uh, transportation, it's, it's difficult for them to even just get transportation to get to these jobs sometimes as well. So, so I'd like to see some investments in those types of, of areas.
And, uh, one last thing. If, if I, if I'm able to come up with a program that's dedicated to where we're doing community policing and where we use people in the community, would you guys be willing to, to help go for it? Would you guys be willing to, you know, support me on it?
I don't want to speak for everyone else up here on that one, but, um, but I would. Um, when it comes to the jobs question, much like Council President Izzy said, you gotta pay people well, you gotta give them benefits, they'll do a lot for those things. I can tell you, I worked as a janitor at a grocery store where some days, not every day, but some days, I was cleaning up just about every fluid that could come out of a human body on every surface but the ceiling. I'll tell you what, though, I'll tell you what, though. If I was making seventeen an hour at the time, if I was getting better benefits, X, Y, and Z, I would have gladly kept doing that, because it's work that needs to be done. There's jobs that just need to be done and we have to pay people to do them. That's just the reality. We spent the entire pandemic talking about essential workers and what have we really gotten for essential workers? They're not getting paid enough. Let's be honest. Let's be honest about that. When it comes back to policing, yes, I believe that we do, thank you, Tanay, um, union strong. Um, when it comes back to policing, yeah, I do believe that we need more community-controlled policing. Um, you know, we have a community police working group and I think that's a great start. But quite honestly, I wouldn't be opposed to seeing how we can make an actual community-controlled board that votes on things like the budgeting for the police, the hiring for the police, the firing for the police, the promotion for the police. So the community actually has a say about it. Yeah, I would love more of an actual oversight committee rather than just, you know, rhetoric.
Can we start with what you asked last? I didn't hear that clearly.
Oh, how are we gonna keep money in the community?
No, you said you were, the last question that you asked was something about?
Oh, the program, the program. It's like, uh, kind of like a, um, honestly, like a criminals and heroes program, where we take small-time offenders and then we, we try it, we teach them to do different, whether it's, um, working as secretaries for the district magistrates or cleaning the streets, or setting up our community social response teams. To where now they go out, we have two people from the community go out, that may be one police officer, plenty of both, to handle situations in their neighborhood. You know what I mean? So like, we have the money, we can put twenty-seven million into our police force, why can't we take two million and fund these programs and make it happen? You know, like, we want policing to be different, we have to start with somewhere. We gotta, we gotta move the money around.
So it sounds to me like you're proposing a business plan that will, um, allude to that? Right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so if you were gonna propose a business plan that would allude to that, and it was a solid business plan, after looking at it, I don't see anything wrong with doing that. I, I would surely support it. I would need to see, you know, some concrete.
Numbers, I, I'm, I'm.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Most, most definitely. So, um, uh, the policing thing, so, um, yes, we have, over the last, um, three years, three to four years, we have hired three, um, social workers. Um, we've implemented body cams. And we've also managed to get the use-of-force policy changed. Um, in order to keep people working and to get people working, you have to pay them better. You know, I, I don't think it takes any rocket scientist to figure out that if you're not gonna pay somebody their worth, they're not going to work. So you need to pay, you need to give them bene-, you know, at, at least be able to provide some kind of benefits and, and keep people working. You know, in today's climate, there's no reason for anybody not to have a job. There's jobs all over the place.
I know what you're saying, but we have to, we have to look at things, too. If you look at the, uh, like with, uh, the police force, with that policing, if you don't look at what they're taught, what they're trained, you know, then where are we really changing? We're getting the same people that are, or keep, are teaching the same things, are coming out of the academy, learning the same things that the previous police force before them learned. So if we're not diving into that, if you, if, we don't have city council diving into that themselves, like checking them out, like checking them, like, what are you guys training? What's your procedures? You know, going to that, then nothing's gonna change. Because everything has to keep getting taught the same way.
What I would like to see is more people of color on the police force. And in order to get more people of color on the police force, we've got to initially build a good relationship with the police department and the community of color. If the community of color doesn't, I mean, it, this is historical. It's not, we're not gonna, our people are not gonna go join the police force when we've been brought up on a premise of mistrust. So we've got to start someplace where we can get more people of color on the police force. And then once we get, I mean, you gotta start somewhere. You know, it's, it's like a big rock and you have to start chipping away at it. We've got to get more people of color, men, women, transgender, LGBTQ, whoever is ready to work. We, we gotta do what we need to do in order to get them on the police force. I promise I won't turn it off.
Is that a question you want the rest of us to answer?
Alright, do we have, um, I do have a couple of questions here on social media, but do we have any other questions from our audience members? Alright, it's over, here.
So, it seems like we have a lot of funds. Coming into the city for, for those who are coming into the city. And, um, I wanted to know, wha- what programs do we have for older people who already have a house, may need some assistance? Are there any programs like that? For them? Um.
I can take that, I'm happy.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think in terms of what the city is directly responsible for, and something that I'd like to see us directly invest more in, um, we have, the city maintains, uh, actually, it came up at a council the other night, the city maintains a critical repair loan and grant program, um, which we believe, which is instituted with the goal of helping folks who may be on a fixed income or who may be low-income, but our homeowners stay in their home. And there are a number, uh, of neighbors, uh, that I've met, northwest, northeast, southeast, southwest, who had that. And we need to make sure that we invest in that program. And now really is the time to invest heavily, as Mr. Culber so kindly reminded us, uh, at a council meeting this month, in making sure those are grant funds, uh, that are available to make sure that people are able to stay in their homes um, and age in place, uh, in Lancaster. Did I answer the heart of your question with Culber? Okay, great. I don't know if that's one for your humor, just.
If anyone has anything else to add?
Anybody?
Alright, alright. Um, so, I have a question online here from, let me try to write it back up. Okay. Alright, uh, David, uh, David Kionis Cruz Jr. says, Lancaster has the potential for rebuilding some key aspects of city life and responsible local government with the American Rescue Plan. Where would members and candidates like to see American Rescue Act funds focused on?
So, um, my, okay. First of all, the, the ARPA funds. If I had my way and my hopes and dreams would be to take care of a lot of affordable housing. Number one. Number two. Number two, the city's most valuable asset. Are children. And I, I know it's not any secret, I haven't made it any secret, that I would like a large chunk of that. To go into the city's infrastruc-, in- infrastructure by way of broadband. So that if we are ever faced with. The beginning of COVID and online schooling and internet service and, you know, all the things that. Our children, my grandchildren, had to deal with not having access to certain things. You know, not having access to internet, you know, having to go outside of their home in the midst of a pandemic. I would love to sink a large chunk of it into infrastructure by way of broadband. To make sure that every single child in this city had internet service. So that they could get the proper education that they all deserve because they are our future.
So I wanna echo the investment in broadband, um. You already said basically everything that needs to be said on that topic, other than if it's something that the city is running. And it's something that citizens are paying for, that cost will be internalized, that money stays in the city rather than going to Comcast or Verizon or X, Y, and Z. Also on the broadband issue, again, I wanna bring up the fact, it won't cost too much money to implement actual infrastructure in city halls. So that way every public government meeting is virtually accessible for everyone. The rest of that money, there's a lot of options. I will be honest with you when I say I don't wanna just toss out ideas. Because I don't know what the numbers behind those, behind the, the propositions would be. Um, for me, as a young person, I'm very worried about the future. I'm worried about the fact that the access to peo-, people's access to clean water is probably gonna decrease. People's access to affordable electricity is probably going to decrease. People's access to healthcare is probably going to decrease if the federal government doesn't stand up and do something. Um, so when it comes to how we invest the rest of that money, we need infrastructure investments and we need to think very long term.
I would really like to see that money be invested in being able to assist more people to become homeowners. Uh, I would like to see that money invested in, in more opportunities, uh, like what Izzy was saying about. Being able to provide people, um, grants who, uh, need help in getting money for down payments. To buy a home, I really think it's important that a lot of people who have homes right now need to keep their homes. And I think that, uh, I would also really like to see that money, uh, be able to be assist people who are struggling with addictions. And need help with housing. Currently, if somebody comes out from incarceration, it's really challenging for them to get housing in place. And so, um, sometimes there's some money from, from county or things like that. Uh, but generally we rely on, on cha- charity from different types of agencies for that. So I'd really like to see housing opportunities for people who will come out from incarceration and more services, um, for these individuals.
I actually feel like I get to, to just talk about this like twice a month in my, in my job, so. Um, but I think really specifically, I think the housing stuff is mostly obvious. I think that we're gonna need to invest ARPA in stock to match, uh, really for two groups of people specifically. Uh, persons who are on the housing authority waiting list, which is years long. Um, and folks who are currently unhoused. Now, both of those populations have vouchers from the federal government, but they, they walk around with those vouchers for months. And can't find a place to actually rent. Um, so we need to develop more stock of specifically income based housing. Um, uh, Faith is absolutely right that our most precious resource is our children. Similarly, the most common household in poverty in Lancaster. Is a single mother of any race with multiple children. And there's no shade in that, I was raised in a single mother household, uh, with my brother. But we need to be ensuring that each and every one of those women has access to childcare services. And that is a thing that can be done with ARPA recovery dollars. Because we're telling people, we want them to get a better job, we want them to become homeowners. But we're saying to them, if you have children, unfortunately, we're not gonna support you in actually getting there. And I think that's a priority that does not get talked about enough.
Oh, right, all right, oh, we got a question here from our audience member, hold on.
I'm sorry, but why can't we talk about the health of this area? Education, education for our kids, what, what are we talking about here? If we're gonna train them to be tradesmen, we gotta train them, our schools have to have that. Our schools don't have that for our kids. Let's talk about that and then we're gonna talk about what, what jobs are available for them because that'll be said, they're not trained.
Do you think our main street downtown is healthy and successful? If not, what would you do to change that?
So like downtown downtown, right, like the first couple of blocks downtown? I just know that there are folks in like Lititz and Hempfield who refer to all of Lancaster city as downtown. Weirds me out a little bit, but I get it. So, um, I think there's a definition of it where it is healthy. It has the restaurants, it has the theaters, it has the this, it has the that, and I love all of those things. But if you take a look at the folks who are sleeping outside, um, and I think that one is low hanging fruit. But if, also if you take a look at the use of space, all of the buildings downtown that have their third, fourth, and fifth floors closed off. That could be offices, that could be businesses, that could be housing, uh, then in that case, it's underperforming. So from like a street level, bright lights, big city, we love it. Um, but we're not doing enough to make sure, uh, that it's activated to its full potential. And again, uh, you know, problem meets solution. If we can get property owners to say, yeah, we'll put housing on the third, fourth, and fifth floor. Um, and we say, okay, we'll provide funding if you promise to reserve that. Because you're already, clearly you own the building, you're already making it the rent that you need to continue going in that direction. If you're willing to reserve some of those housing units then built for folks with section eight vouchers. Or with, uh, HUD vouchers for homelessness, then we can put, uh, we can put people who have a problem, which is that our society has failed them. And they are unhoused directly into a solution, um, and make a genuinely healthier downtown.
We do definitely need to do something about that, um, the homeless population downtown. Uh, one of the things that just keeps coming out when I was canvassing was the fact that people felt, um, also very unsafe. So some of the, some of the homeless people that are, are downtown, uh, or persons who are maybe under the influence of something. Are causing a lot of people who live downtown, they just don't want, they, they feel anxious, they feel kind of scared. And I heard that a lot and, uh, that was really troubling, but I can't say that I don't run into that even when I was canvassing. So I think that, uh, that needs to be addressed. I, I fully feel that that can bring, that more people could be com- coming more to the city. But they're hesitating and I think that has to be a priority, it really does, I can't overstate that.
So again, to talk about homelessness, because I feel like that is something that deters people from going downtown. I've said it before, I'll say it again, the data shows that the long term solution to homelessness, especially economically. Is you give them housing, you give them a home, you give them a place to live. Then it's easier to provide them services and make them quote unquote productive members of society. In terms of creative ideas to help the downtown economy grow and be more vibrant. I would love to see a better nightlife downtown that doesn't revolve around drinking alcohol. Um, especially because I feel like a lot of young people that I know, they end up. They end up leaving Lancaster because they're like, well, what's going on downtown? And I'm like, well, okay, that's fair, that's fair, um. So things that don't revolve around drinking alcohol would be great, things that are inviting for people of all ages would be great. Also, something that was proposed decades and decades and decades ago, before city government decided to bulldoze communities of colors housing. And some areas downtown is having a car free zone. I think that's something that we should really be exploring because it's just going to add space for people to be people. It's gonna make the streets safer for the elderly, for the disabled, for children. It's going to add more space so we can be creative with our live music and the art scene. It's just gonna be a better environment in my opinion for everyone.
So, um, Darney, to address your question, do I feel like downtown is healthy? Um, it's coming along, you know, it's not like it used to be. You know, when I was little, there was an ice skate rink downtown, there were four department stores. Every single building downtown was filled to the brim with shopping for everyone. You could go there and go shopping if you made fifty dot, now this is an exaggeration. If you made fifty dollars a week, you could go downtown and go shopping if you made fifteen hundred dollars a week. Didn't matter who you were or what economical status you came from, you could go downtown and enjoy downtown Lancaster. It's not quite there yet, but I think it will get there. Keith, I'd like to address your issue with job training. And the job training for the children not being in school. Yes, I would be in support of having job training in school. When I was in school, job training was there and it was beneficial. And it was beneficial to a lot of children and, and, uh, a lot of grownups that I know today. Without that job training that they got in school. Um, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth would not have a job today. Thank you.
Do we have a, we have another question from our audience?
Now earlier, I guess the first question that I posed to you folks was about infrastructure. And, uh, some of you touched on it, uh, not just the roads and bridges. That's probably not the infrastructure that I was looking for. I was looking for the social infrastructure. In the past, and I might update myself, uh, there was organizations in our neighborhoods. That took care of all those folks that you guys are talking about, the homelessness, the drug addiction, you know, and everything. But those organizations have been picked off like low hanging fruit, early gathering place. You can leave it, they were all there. And, well, for whatever, you know, I know we went through this process of.
Eliminating all the organizations and then focusing on the big organization. But SAC is not the catch all for everything in our communities. Those, and those, those organizations need to be established. So that money, that ARPA money that you're talking about. Should be looked into moving some of those social organizations back out into the forefront so they can deal with some of these folks. Also, we were looking at a lot of things about the, the homelessness. Well, how about the homelessness that are created by the evictions that the code enforcement are doing in our city? A lot of folks have just been introduced to, uh, uh, um, elderly gentleman, his wife. And the mentally challenged son who was evicted from their house. They lived on the street for two days in front of their house. And then in the parking lot for three days until they found a place to call home. Now, the code enforcement is probably, I don't know if it's under your jurisdiction or the city, uh, the mayor's jurisdiction. But it seems like they are out of control and they, they need to be reined in. What would you do, you know? As I'm posing these issues to you, what would you do to rein in those folks?
So, I turned it off again. So when it comes to dealing with issues like evictions. I honestly don't have the best understanding of the legislation surrounding that. But what I can tell you is from me going to council and asking questions, it sounds like Lancaster city operating under the third class city code. Doesn't have as much control as we would all like over keeping people housed, over setting aside affordable housing in large development private projects. So I would like to see the city government approach the state government about amending the third class city code that we have to operate under. So not only do we have more le- legislative controls, but so we also have other ways to generate revenue. That's not going to tax out all of our middle and low income homeowners in the city. When it comes to community organizations, I think what we've learned from COVID is that the future is mutual aid. The future is direct action, the future, much like the past, is about community. When we go and look historically, we had groups like the Black Panthers that were providing free breakfast for folks. That were making sure kids got to school safely, that were making sure people were educated and had a- access to job opportunities, economic opportunities. I don't know how much the city necessarily needs to invest monetarily in establishing social organizations. Because it seems like the community's already doing it, maybe the city can put together some social infrastructure to just help it generally happen.
I wanted to address, uh, the question about the, uh, organizations that are gone and just that, the need for that is still there. I, I think it's, I, you know, you, you might try what, you know, I guess the, the way that they have things now. With the two one one and, and all the organizations that where they're trying to do that, uh, for the past few years. But obviously something's lacking and these other organizations that were in place did an amazing job. And it would be great, I would really like to see these types of organizations come back. Um, I think that they, they caught a lot of things. Uh, obviously the system is, is not able to help enough people quickly enough. So these organizations, there is still a need for that and I would really like to be a part of seeing tho- those types of organizations come back.
Um, first I'll address the, um, the organizational issue, question that you had, um. I'd like to see them come back as well. Uh, right now I don't know what the solution to that is. But what I would be, what I would like to do is, is probably sit down and have a conversation to find out. The underlying problem of why they're not here and then try to figure out how we get them reestablished. Um, you had another question too, what was it? Oh, the code enforcement, um, how do we rein in code enfor- code enforcement? I don't know which department, and that is the honest truth, I don't know which department, probably Public Works. That it falls under, but I don't know enough about what code enforcement does. I mean, I have a general idea. I'd have to investigate a little further, find out what they're doing and go from there. And that, that's what I'd have to give that to them. And if they would need reining in, we'd figure out a way to do it.
Yeah, so on the, on the first part about the organizations, um, Urban League, inner city group, um. You know, the Boys and Girls Club sort of did a hopscotch with the southeast, if, if you know what I mean, you know, come, going out and coming back in. Um, but I think Mr. Dasra actually has it exactly, uh, right. What previously existed in the African American community and in the, the southeast as a whole, um. shouldn't really be credited to the investment of city government or indeed the United Way. Our communities were resilient, and there was a time when many of the homes in the southeast, or many more of them, were owned by black and brown residents of the southeast who then, by virtue of owning their homes and controlling their blocks and neighborhoods, were able to invest in those various programs, spend their time. And look like I was, the Rites of Passage at Brightside, when it was back across the street from the Save-A-Lot or over at Crispus Addicts, is a program that I went through. So really, it is about returning the opportunity for wealth development to those communities. We know for a fact that twenty million dollars leaves the southeast every year in rents. The southeast should have that twenty million dollars back. And I will try to really briefly answer the question about, oh, it was about the code enforcement. So I'm gonna go a little over. I apologize. Yeah, they do need to be reined in in some places. And more significantly, there aren't enough of them in other places. People's houses and landlords are being allowed to get away with creating really awful conditions over a number of years. So then a code inspector comes in and is like, oh, what is this? And condemns the property, and that person's out on the street. That's a matter of being reactive as opposed to proactive. And so we're trying to do it all at once instead, and we're making people homeless when we do it.
Awesome, awesome. Can we give our candidates that are here tonight a round of applause? So there were a lot more comments. They weren't necessarily questions. Just a lot of people making statements. Kind of like the heat energy up in here. So I do want to thank you all for coming out and making time for this. Before we get into our closing statements for the evening, Ms. Darlene, Mr. Paul, do you have anything that she would like to say before our candidates do their closing statements?
NAN has a fundraiser coming up, a holiday raffle. We have a holiday raffle coming up, so if you could contact or let any of our NAN members know they have tickets for our holiday raffle. That supports our services that we provide.
Yeah, contact NAN members. Yes, if anybody would like to join NAN, it's an organization. We are a nonprofit, tax-exempt. And you can see any NAN member afterwards or get the information online. And I'm glad to have anybody join.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you so much. So for those of you that are home and watching live, you missed out on an opportunity to join NAN, but you can make it do it tomorrow or next week. And if you've seen Ms. Darlene or anybody a part of the NAN team, you can just talk to them about the holiday raffle as well as joining for membership. So, let's get into the good stuff. Let's do these closing remarks, guys. Who wants to go first? Who? All right, awesome, awesome. Ms. Faith, go first with her closing remarks. Thank you.
I'd like to go first because I like to get it done. So anyway, thanks, NAN. Thank you, guys, for being here. Thanks to everybody that participated, TCP, Stevens, the folks online, and my colleagues up here. Thank you for being here. Definitely interesting and great conversation. I appreciate it all. It always makes me better. I'm always super nervous when I come in here, so it takes me a while to get started. So anyway, I would like to continue. My name's Faith Craig. I would like to continue to serve on city council to continue to do the work that we have started as it relates to affordable housing, COVID recovery, and community policing. That is about all I have. Remember to go out and vote, Faith Craig. November 2nd. I'm the second on the ballot. Thank you.
All right, so just again echoing all the thanks to NAN for organizing this, for TCP, for moderating, for everyone up here for talking and answering questions, for all you guys out there participating, for everyone online watching along. When I decided to run, I knew it was gonna be an uphill battle. I'm a young person. I have to, I have my own life obligations. I'm running as a third-party candidate. Vote Gold Goose Party, GGP, Joey Dastre. But I'm doing it because I know it's important. I'm doing it because I know that whether win or lose, I'm pushing a conversation. And win or lose, I'm gonna take a couple of weeks for myself. And then I'm gonna be back at city council. And I'm gonna be back asking questions and making comments, and that's how this all happens. I need you guys to show up too. We need each other to show up. Even if you don't vote, which I think you should, you can participate in politics, you can participate in the community, and you can make a difference. Thank you, Joey Dastre.
I do want to thank NAN and every, all of you here who came to take the time to be here. Myself, I'm definitely not in any way a politician. I'm a social worker, and my heart was coming to here to be a different voice. And so I really would like to have your support just because I think that as the only, as one of the two Republican candidates that is running for office, I'd really like to work with city council and give a different voice and one that knows and is extremely familiar with social services. And as a Latina in the community, I'd really like to come and come to city council and work with you all and be able to offer you some assistance with knowing the community as I've been in social services in this community for over twenty years. Really like to offer my experience to you guys in the community. And I just appreciate you coming all here and listening to this.
Sorry, I was just thinking about, as I was discussing at the beginning of this, that four years ago, there was a moment we were on a stage and there were eleven of us. And this would not have been a tidy hour and forty-five minutes. We would have gotten out of here roughly around eleven PM. Competitive elections make for better government. Within the party, between parties, they make for better government. The folks up here are dedicated public servants, whether they have the titles or not, and they have ideas that make this city better. And so do each and every one of you. In fact, everything that I would take credit for, new investments in affordable housing, new investments in lead safety, decriminalizing marijuana in the city of Lancaster, even though that one was a bit of an uphill. The fact that we have, the fact that we livestream city council meetings and have now expanded to live streaming five more public meetings, every single one of those came from the interactions with or the actions of community members. So it's not about us, it's about y'all. So come out and vote. Yeah, of course, I hope you vote for me. But come out and vote on November 2nd. And just like Mr. Dastre said, then stick with it because there's gonna be a day when we are all gone, and this will still be your community. Thank you.
All right, guys, and just to blow my mind, as you know, we do have two candidates who, three candidates, who could not be here today. So myself and Sean will be reading their closing remarks. So the first one I'm going to read is from Lachar Galak. In his closing, he says, again, I reiterate my apologies for not being with you tonight, but I encourage anyone in the audience or watching from home who would like to know my stances or get to know me as a candidate to reach out on Facebook or get in touch via email. I'm always happy to discuss my vision for the city. I hope I can earn your vote, November 2nd. Thank you. And then a closing remark for Ms. Deana M. Mountness. She says, Deana for Unity. That's my campaign name, Unite. That is exactly what I want to do in this beautiful city. We continue to let political parties divide us. If we took away our political parties and looked at our beliefs and convictions, we would have many things in common. We need to push political parties aside and look to our commonality. During my campaign, I've spoken to many of you from all different backgrounds, cultures, and political parties. It was great. We were able to discuss our differences, our hopes for the city and our future. I was able to share my vision for the city. We found common ground, and we were so appreciative of it. This is what I will bring to the city council, in open dialogue with all residents, the opportunity to be heard and with respect. Together, we can make this city vibrant and diverse, yet a place for all because everyone has a place in our community. And it will be a better city when it is safe, collaborative, and transparent. Thank you. And I will have Sean do the closing remark for Ms. Janet Diaz.
David, that's your last. So for those of you who didn't hear me earlier, and I promise I'm not getting recorded this time, I am Sean Philer. I'm here not only representing Janet Diaz, but supporting her.
For those of you who know Janet Diaz, you know she's an absolute firecracker. She is someone who was put on this earth to fight, to fight for things we care about, to fight for affordable housing, to fight for those who don't have a voice. So I stand in front of you asking you to vote for Janet, to vote for someone who's fighting for you, to vote for someone who is championing working-class issues and who cares about our community. So please vote for Janet Diaz. And for more information, go to our city council website, janetdiazforcitycouncil.com. Thank you so much.
Awesome, awesome. All right, so as we close, thank you all for coming out. Don't forget to get out and vote on November 2nd. If you're unsure of your voting status, visit votepa.org. And you can find out if you're registered, where you registered, where you go out and vote at. All of those things have. Again, vote November 2nd. Thank you all for coming out.
Good morning. Wake up, guys. It's TCP in the morning.
Wake up!
Wake up.
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 Wake up. It's TCP in the morning.
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 Good morning. Wake up, y'all. It's TCP in the morning with the morning T.
Sing the song, man.
TCP.